Hi, famas. Are you able to log in okay? If you could hear me.
Yeah, I'm on now. Thanks. The weather link you sent was looked like a public link or something. I was not able to get in. Oh, I could get in, but I couldn't see you.
Oh, okay.
Problem solved. Thank you.
Okay. So is that good? Okay. I was just coming in chat. Yep. All right. Thank you.
All right. Let's back this up. Oscar just messaged to his guy. He's having problems as well. Me, Cherry.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm fine. Trying to get people logged in. Okay. Oscar's was recent. Had to delete it and re-add it.
Yeah, I think all the council is present.
Yes, we are.
Call the meeting to order. Joint City Council Fire Protection District Board Meeting. Sixteen twenty twenty-one. We have flag to share for the place of allegiance. Thank you. Please join me in the place of allegiance. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember, board member, Miriam Abadamos.
Here.
Councilmember, board member, David Oral.
Here.
Councilmember, board member, Pierre Washington.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair, Mark Joseph.
Here.
Mayor and Chair Leon Garcia.
Here. Thank you. We'll move now to report on closed session confirmation of reportable actions. Mr. Ross.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. The council and fire board convened in open session at five oh two P M. To address the matters that were agendaized for closed session consideration, both by the fire board and by the city council. You, having received no public comment on those matters, you adjourned in closed session to address those matters. The fire district matters were considered first. You concluded that at five twenty-nine P M. And then at five thirty addressed the city matters. And you concluded with those at six twenty-seven P M. For both the fire district and the city council. I will do a written report upon return from closed session. Indicating appropriate county, indicating appropriate city council or fire board action where appropriate, under the provisions of Government Code Section fifty-four nine fifty-seven point one. That would be the report unless there are questions.
Any questions from the council? Thank you, Mr. Ross. Next will be city clerks and alps and the clerks of government code five four nine five two point three. It is a stated in the agenda. We're going now to teleconference participants. City clerk.
Thank you for joining us for the February sixteen twenty twenty-one City of American Canyon Council meeting. This meeting is being held entirely virtually in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. The format tonight will be similar to that of an in-person city council meeting. In addition to the Zoom platform, the meeting is being broadcast on cable TV channel twenty-eight, on YouTube and streamed live on the city's website. You will see the city council members on your screen, along with members of city staff. All members of the public will participate in a listen-only mode. Public comment is invited for non-agenda items during the public forum section of the meeting on each agenda item. When the item you speak, you wish to speak on is called, please follow these steps to make your comment. When the mayor calls a particular item and you wish to speak on that item, click the raise hand button if joining by computer. If joining by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. When it is your turn, I will announce your name and invite you to speak. You may see a message saying the host will like you to unmute your microphone. If you get this message saying the host will like you to unmute your microphone, please click unmute myself and begin speaking. To unmute yourself by phone, dial star six and begin speaking. The video will not be turned on, only the audio. You have up to three minutes to make your comments to the city council. At the end of your three minutes, I will ask you to conclude your comments quickly, and I will mute your audio once you're done. Please press star nine to raise your hand for the items you wish to speak on, as the raised hand will be cleared at the end of each item. The agenda for this meeting is available on the city council's page of the city's website. As is in standard practice, community members are allowed to comment one time on each agenda item. All votes at tonight's meeting will be taken by roll call. We ask for your patience and understanding when there are technical difficulties. This conclude my introductory remark.
Thank you. Now to proclamations and presentations. This evening, we have a presentation on Martin Luther King Junior, put together by the American Canyon Middle School. And we'll have that now. Can we bring that up, please?
Yes, and I also have Karina here, and she would like to make an open statement before we start the video.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Good evening. Welcome. Looking forward to this presentation.
Thank you for having me. I really appreciate it that you guys have taken such a liking to our video. Jason, City Manager Holly was really kind to post it on our city website and now presented it here. And so it's greatly appreciated and humbling. So, Dr. Dan Scudero, ACMS principal from two thousand eight to two thousand twenty. He worked tirelessly over the years to build an inclusive community. And as a living legacy, he gave me the task to put this video together in honor of Black History Month twenty twenty-one. He actually saw the video this past weekend, and he sent a really moving email. He mentioned that he even cried when he saw it. He's so proud of the the community here in American Canyon. He misses us. And so also, I wanted to give a special thanks to Jeff Serbanty, my husband, for editing the video and to all of you here that participated. You guys did a great job. So thank you for taking my call and letting me video you guys. Okay, so please go ahead and continue. Thank you.
All right, well, roll the video.
Can you make it full screen? We can't hear anything.
How's that?
There's no sound.
There's no sound?
There is no sound, none on my end. I think what you have to do when you go to share screen, you have to choose share, share sound from your computer. There's an little option button on there. You go back to share screen. Under audio settings, and then I think.
You can also find it, Cherry, if you see the mute button on the bottom.
Can you hear it now?
No. But you see on the bottom left how there's a mute button with a little arrow? If you click that, it tells you to select a speaker. And I think if you do same as system and same as system for microphone, it should work.
What about now, seventy-three?
I know.
All right, thank you.
In Martin Luther King Junior's speech, he demands the same justice and equality for all Americans that is promised to all citizens in the Declaration of Independence. We who serve the American Canyon community believe in the same promise. Together, we stand in unity and share his speech through a collaborative video reminding us all the living legacy. We strive to make our truth each day. We hope you enjoy the American Canyon Collection of Voices. I say to you today, my friends, even though we face the difficulties of today and tomorrow, I still have a dream. It is a dream deeply rooted in the American dream.
I have a dream that one day this nation will rise up, live out the true meaning of its creed.
We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men and women are created equal.
I have a dream that one day former slaves and former slave owners will be able to sit down together at the table of brotherhood.
I have a dream that one day even the state of Mississippi, a state sweltering with the heat of injustice, sweltering with the heat of oppression, will be transformed into an oasis of freedom and justice.
I have a dream that my poor little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character.
I have a dream.
I have a dream that one day in Alabama, with its vicious races, with its governor having his lips dripping with the words of interposition and nullification.
One day, right there in Alabama, little black boys and black girls will be able to join hands with little white boys and white girls as sisters and brothers.
I have a dream today.
I have a dream that one day every valley will be exalted, every hill and mountain be made low.
The rough places will be made plain and the crooked places will be made straight.
And the glory of the Lord shall be revealed, and all flesh shall see it together.
This is our hope.
This is the hope I go back to the South with.
With this faith, we will be able to hew out of the mountain of despair a stone of hope.
With this faith, we will be able to transform the jangling discords of our nation into a beautiful symphony of brotherhood.
With this faith, we will be able to work together, to pray together, to struggle together, to go to jail together, to stand up for freedom together, knowing that we will be free one day.
This will be the day that all of God's children will be able to sing with new meaning.
My country tis of thee, sweet land of liberty, of thee I sing.
Land where my father died, land of the pilgrim's pride. From every mountainside, let freedom ring.
And if America is to be a great nation, this must become true.
Let freedom rain from the prodigious hilltops of New Hampshire.
Let freedom ring from the mighty mountains of New York.
Let freedom ring from the snow-capped Rockies of Colorado.
Let freedom ring from the heightening Alleghenies of Pennsylvania.
Let freedom ring from the curvaceous lofts of California.
But not only that.
Let freedom ring from Stone Mountain of Georgia.
Let freedom ring from Lookout Mountain, Tennessee.
Let freedom ring from every hill in Mullhill of Mississippi, from every mountainside.
Let freedom ring.
When we allow freedom to ring.
When we let it ring from every city and every hamlet.
From every state and every city.
We will be able to speed up that day when all of God's children.
Black men and white men, Jews and Gentiles, Protestants and Catholics.
Will be able to join hands and sing in the words of the old Negro's spirit.
Free at last, free at last. Thank God Almighty, we're free at last.
Bravo, bravo. Outstanding work. Thank you. Very moving. Thank you for bringing that to us today. Well, very good. Just please express our appreciation to all the staff and who participated in this. It's a great moment for American Canyon. It really expresses who we are as a community. So it's a good selection of participants in that. Thanks again for reading. Good job.
You're very welcome. And stay tuned because we're working on another project, super secret project.
Oh, no.
I'll be calling you.
Can't wait.
Thank you.
Can't wait. All right, moving on to our agenda. Public comment. We haven't seen public comments this evening on anything that are not agendaized.
Yes, Mayor, I received a public comment from Bayard Fox regarding item E one on the urgency ordinance. Chris James. Item E one, the temporary moratorium gas station item. Kathy Davis. Urgency item E one. Jason Kishna. Item E one. Joe Schmuck. Schmuck. Item E one.
We, Joe.
Chuck Heisen.
Dunk. That was.
Dunk. Sorry, Schum. Joe Schum. And Samantha Smith, item E one. And Jason Kishinoff submitted a public comment, which is a non-agenda item on the cannabis ordinance.
Thank you.
If there is anyone here wishing to speak, please raise your hand. Please press star nine. I do have one hand raised, which is Mark Salma.
This would be for non-agendaized items, though.
Agenda items, yes. Correct.
His hand was removed. There are no hands raised. There are no more public comments.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to our agenda then. Agenda changes? Agenda changes, council and board directors for Fire Protection District.
None here.
I see not hearing none. We'll move on to matters related to American Canyon Fire Protection District Board Consent Calendar.
Yeah, I will move to adopt the consent calendar with just one note. The December meeting notes and item B one listed the vice chair for the December meetings as current vice chair, Mark Joseph. This is a minor thing. I was vice chair in December. So just, just note that change. It's not a big showstopper. He took the vice chair and the vice mayorship in January. So with that said, I will move to adopt the consent calendar for the American Canyon Fire Protection District.
I'll second it. The city clerk will note those changes to be made. Okay, roll call, please.
Board member, Miriam Abadamos.
Yes.
Board member, David Oral.
Yes.
Board member Pierre Washington.
Yes.
Vice Chair, Mark Joseph.
Yes.
Chair Leon Garcia.
Yes. Thank you, Board. Moving on to our agenda, we have the business items for American Canyon Fire Protection District. Adopt a resolution authorizing the fire district board members or designated city official to be authorized signers on the fire district's bank account at West America Bank.
Excuse me, Chairman Garcia and board members, this is, we're, this is an item that was brought to you several weeks ago. We're, we submitted it. I think we've answered the questions associated with that, and we ask for you to approve this item.
Okay. It's a routine matter. Any public comment on this item?
There is one hand raised. Nick. Hi, Nick. Please unmute your phone, your microphone.
Hello?
Hi, Nick.
Sorry, I missed what we were doing.
You had your hand raised. Do you wish to speak on under the, regarding the item for the fire district for business item C one?
Forgive me, forgive me. I'll turn that off. I'm waiting for the the urgency ordinance for the moratorium on new gas stations.
Okay, yes, we're not here yet. Thank you.
So sorry.
I was excited. I thought maybe there was someone that wanted to speak to this item. Any other public comment on this item?
No.
Okay. There's a motion to second.
I'll make a move to adopt a resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero two. Resolution of the city council of the City of American Canyon Fire Protection District, amending authorized signers at West America Bank.
Okay. So a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Board member Abadamos.
Yes.
Board member Oral.
Yes.
Board member Washington.
Yes.
Vice Chair Joseph.
Yes.
Chair Garcia. Sarah Garcia?
Yes, thank you. Moving to item, business item C2, adopt a resolution authorizing the fire district members or designated city of American Canyon officials to deposit or withdraw funds from the local agency investment fund.
Chairman Garcia and board members, again, this is another item very similar to the last, cleaning up some of the authorizations associated with the ability for the city to ask to act as the fiduciary agent for the fire district.
Any public comment on this item?
We do? Um, no.
Okay, we'll close public comment on it.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 2021-03. Resolution of the American Canyon Fire Protection District, authorizing investment of monies in the local agency investment fund.
I'll second that.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Board member Abadamos?
Yes.
Board member Oral?
Yes.
Board member Washington?
Yes.
Vice Chair Joseph?
Yes.
Sarah Garcia?
Yes. Thank you, Board. Move on to item C3, adopt a resolution approving the American Canyon Fire Protection District Conflict of Interest Code.
Chair Garcia and board members, the Fair Political Practices Reform Act and Regulations of the Fair Political Practices Commission require local agencies to update their conflict of interest code to reflect actual personnel that are employed by the local agency. District Resolution 2021-04 does that. Recommendation is to adopt the resolution affecting those change, changes to comply with Political Reform Act and FPPC regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment.
No close public comment on the item. Is there a motion and a second?
I will move to adopt resolution number 2021-04. Resolution of the City of American Canyon City Council, sitting ex officio as the board of directors of the American Canyon Fire Protection District, adopting a conflict of interest code.
I'll second that.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Board member Abadamos?
Yes.
Board member Oral?
Yes.
Board member Washington?
Yes.
Vice Chair Joseph?
Yes.
Sarah Garcia?
Yes. Thank you. We'll move on now to matters relating to the American Canyon City Council. Consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion second?
Council member Abadamos?
Yes.
Council member Oral?
Yes.
Council member Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you.
Now on to the show.
Now move to, on to our agenda, we are at public hearing. Number E1. Consider an interim urgency ordinance imposing a 45-day temporary moratorium prohibiting discretionary development, applications, processing, and construction permit issuance for fuel stations in all zoning districts in the City of American Canyon, pending review and possible amendment of municipal code regulations, and setting forth the facts constituting such urgency.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Community Development Director Brent Cooper, who has a staff presentation. Brent, take it away. All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council members. I have a brief presentation, just an overview of the process and the issues that we discussed at the last workshop. And I'll share my screen and we'll take it from there. So hopefully, you're seeing a full screen here of the slide, front page. So just give you a very brief background. The issues really came to light during a conditional use permit review of the Circle K gas station and convenience store at the planning commission in September and October. And we got a lot of really good public input on the project, and the planning commission really sought guidance from the city council on gas station policies. Council, scheduled a workshop at your last meeting on February 2nd, and through that discussion, we're here tonight, per your direction, to discuss interim urgency ordinance. Just a quick overview, the city now has three fuel stations, gas stations in the city. First, the oldest one is the Union 76 Station, and that was rebuilt in 1999. Then, of course, we have the Safeway Gas Station, and our newest one across the highway from City Hall in 2008. It's odd, many years goes by without any applications, and suddenly, we have three. The first one, which was approved by the planning commission here on the screen, is the Circle K. That's a convenience store and a gas station. Recently, the city received initially used permit applications for a rotten robbie station at Donaldson Way and Broadway. This is a larger site. It includes a car wash, convenience store, gas station, and then a future retail component. And then, secondly, we have a 7-Eleven gas station. That's just the fuel station alone. It'll be next to the 7-Eleven store over by Walgreens in South Park Town. Just kind of taking a look at the map and how they lay out, it's kind of interesting, in my view, how they pair one to the other on both sides of Broadway at some level. To the north here, we have the Circle K, which is the red star. That's the one that's approved. And then across Broadway or Lincoln Highway is the blue star, is the Chevron. About a mile or so to the south, we have the proposed rotten robbie, green star there, and across the highway is Union 76. And a little further south, we have Safeway, and then, of course, next to the Walgreens is 7-Eleven, we have a 7-Eleven gas station. So at the last workshop, a number of great issues were discussed. We talked about what's the difference between maybe a fuel station or a gas station. City approves fuel stations. They're not limited to one type of automobile fuel. There could be others as well. Although, of course, we all recognize fossil fuels, gasoline and diesel and the like is the most popular one today. As we talked a lot about, what happens to the national fleet as it electrifies to the fossil fuel demand? So when we're looking at gas stations, do we have too many basically for what we have today? Or what about the future as fuels become electric more widely? Also concern about what does Broadway District, Highway 29, that's our city's front door, what does that look like? We have service stations, you know, various intervals along the highway there. Perhaps also there's a concern with what are they adjacent to in terms of a context? It's part of the conditional use permit process. Take a close look at that. Also concerns about what happens if conventional fuel stations become obsolete? Then maybe they're potentially reused. We got feedback that there are a lot of older stations that, you know, are perhaps more difficult to recycle than newer ones with the double hull underground tanks. So there's a lot of issues there to talk about, on top of the issue of, well, maybe there's a more desirable use that could go on some of these sites. So tonight, as we're here discussing an urgency ordinance, I can take a moment here to talk about what is an urgency ordinance? Sort of something we haven't looked at for some time, was good to refresh. And so when we're looking at it, the question comes up to, well, is there in fact an urgency? The ordinance that's attached to the staff report talks about various issues that may be looked at as an urgency. Or kind of come over some of the issues that might also lead to what an urgency might consist of in terms of the aesthetics or the concentration and the like. If an urgency ordinance is approved, the issues that we look at collectively, that we consider to be urgent, would be evaluated. Forty-five days is really a very short period of time, since the consideration of the ordinance occurs at a regular council meeting, and the council meets the first and third Tuesdays of the month. Just as the way that the calendar lays out, 45 days from today, should an urgency ordinance be approved, would end at the April 2nd, which is short of your first April meeting and a long way past your second meeting in March. So essentially, what we would do as staff is evaluate the issues that the council directs us to look at, and bring back a report to your next regular council meeting or special meeting. Your next regular council meeting that is before April 2nd would be on March 15th. I'm sorry, March 16th. It's wrong there. So not much time, it's one month from today. Getting maybe a little of the nuts and bolts of what is an urgency ordinance, apart from the more interesting parts and the issues we look at. It is authorized by state law, by the government code there. And the reason for an urgency ordinance is prohibit potential land uses that may conflict with existing or contemplated a general plan or zoning policies and ordinances. And so that's a lot of the nature that we've talked about thus far, and the reason why an urgency ordinance might be an action the council is interested in taking. The urgency ordinance process allows the council to adopt three separate ordinances, each with their own timeframes. And that overall amounts to a potential time of two years. Looking back not too distant, we ended up needing two years for the cannabis ordinance through three separate actions of the council. But there have been other times when we've had urgency ordinances that haven't had been needed that much time. And so you can always finish sooner than what the ordinance expiration date might indicate. But just kind of break it down, the first time an urgency ordinance could be approved by the council is for 45 days. After that staff report, completing the 45-day period or sort of that, the next ordinance, should their way one adopted, would last for 10 months and 15 days. If you add the 45 days to that, that makes a year. And then, if necessary, council does have the option for an additional 12-month extension. The adoption of an ordinance requires four-fifths of the council to vote in favor of it. And like I mentioned, the outcome of all of this would be potential changes to the general plan or zoning code primarily. Perhaps there's other policy issues or two that might come into play. At our last workshop meeting, there was a request to talk about and to discuss a little bit about what are the uses that are allowed in different zoning districts in the Broadway District. And so I have a graphic here that shows zoning map. You can see from the different squares and colors and letters, it's quite a patchwork quilt. It really consists of two main types of zoning, if I could describe that. I have a chart at the bottom of the graphic there, on the left-hand side of pre-existing zoning districts. And so before the Broadway District was approved, there was zoning throughout this area. And when the Broadway District was approved, some of those areas did not have the zoning change. And the reason for that is a lot of those areas were already built. For example, the Napa Junction Shopping Center. It's built, it's there, it's functioning. There's no reason to change the zoning. And we have other shopping centers and hotels and things. And so a lot of those areas were carved out. We just leave it alone. It's working fine. And so the focus of the Broadway District was to look at areas where there was vacant and underutilized property. And so those areas were places where we pre-acted new zoning. And so on the right-hand side here, we have the Downtown Core, Broadway Residential, Business Park, Home Improvement, and Local Serving Mixtapes. And the idea here was to take this two-mile segment, pair it up with areas that are already built and functioning fine, and kind of try to segment it and get some specialization along the Broadway District. And so there was a request by some of the council members to discuss or provide at least a list of the different uses that are allowed in each of these zoning districts. And I have that information available. Certainly happy to talk about it at your discretion. I'll scroll through. I'll warn you, it's a bit long. But if it's something you'd like to discuss, we can always go back to it. So I'll start. So what I have here on this next screen are a list of the Broadway, these are the new Broadway District zoning types. We have the Broadway Residential, Business Park, Downtown Core, Local Serving Mixtapes, Home Improvement. And so this graphic here is showing on the left-hand side, a variety of land uses. And then beneath each column, if it's, most of them are, where P means it's permitted. If there's a dash line, it means not permitted. In some cases, as you'll see, there'll be a C, which means a conditional use permit. And those are uses that might not be appropriate everywhere, and we have reserved discretion to take a look at that issue and modify the project, or perhaps even deny it if it's not compatible. So anyway, these are a list of residential uses that may or may not be allowed in each of these districts. There are a number of commercial uses. As you can see, there are many listed uses here. And oftentimes, the reason for that is to provide a broad range of uses so that they can be, private sector can do their thing and be creative without necessarily finding that we don't have a use that fits them, and then have to go through a zone change process. But there was a certain tailoring to the way in which these uses were allowed that more speaks to the specificity of each of the zoning districts. If you look at the Broadway Residential column, for example, none of those commercial uses are permitted. But we have some that are allowed in some of the other districts and some that are not in others. So I'm kind of scrolling through. We're still on commercial uses. You can see we have a couple here on the residential. And then we have another category quasi and public quasi. These are private clubs, schools, cultural facilities, and then the like. And then recreation uses and then accessory uses. Accessory uses are uses that help support a primary use. It's not usually a standalone, but it's in conjunction with something. And so these are the various uses that are permitted in each of the Broadway District's specific plan uses. As I mentioned, in the Broadway District, we have, I'll call, legacy zoning, and I have their uses there as well. I'm not sure how instructive it is, because much of the area where these areas are zoned are built out. There's a few exceptions here and there, but most of these areas are already built out. So bear with me as I'll scroll through. So here we have the residential districts. We have a medium-density residential off of Teresa, and then a high-density in the Napa Junction Center. There are some recreational and public and quasi-public uses that are allowed. The zoning out there on Teresa was left alone with the existing medium-density. It seemed to be working fine. The folks that lived out there seemed satisfied with it, and so much of that area was just kind of left with the uses that were permitted before. And then there are, and this screen here is showing neighborhood commercial and community commercial. CN is the neighborhood and CC is the community commercial. And like I say, the most of these areas are built out, with the exception of property on Coco Way. Those are legacy commercial uses, and they're working fine, and some of the property owners there kind of wanted to leave their zoning alone. So the most part, most of the commercial areas here are existing, and there's not a lot of chance for turnover or change. But it says, you can see, a very broad-based, extensive list of uses permitted in those two zoning districts. So perhaps if we're concerned about a lot of uses in the Broadway District, it has been pared down from what it once was before we had the specific plan. So kind of sort of moving on to So kind of sort of moving on to next steps. Tonight, obviously, is a public hearing. Really looking forward to hearing what people have to say. The council could determine whether or not to declare an urgency. We're looking forward to your direction on what we might accomplish in forty-five days, actually closer to thirty days, to look at the regular council meeting. And then we can kind of take it from there. So we're glad to answer any questions you have at this point.
Thinking of this, why did the, before we get into any questions for Mr. Cooper, appropriate to report any ex parte communication we've had with the principals involved? Personally, I have talked with all representatives for 0711, Robinson Oil, this is Rotten Robbie, and Circle K. The extent of the conversation was just about, primarily about aesthetics, about what would future reuse look like, possibility, safety issues, the impact of having that on the highway, and the economics of it. Anybody else need to report any ex parte?
Mayor, I had a conversation with a representative from Circle K today, and again, he discussed the merits of his proposal and what he's done to date, and a general conversation on those lines.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to report that I did have a conversation with one person, Ross Hillisheim. He is the applicant for Circle K. We spent a lot of time discussing his journey through this process. I had questions about understanding about the viability of that corner, what he had proposed before or thought about, and then questions around market rate studies of what could possibly go into that corner and just generally what he has done to already gain planning commission approval.
I as well have had a conversation, a brief conversation, maybe ten minutes, with Mr. Ross Hillisheim. He contacted me via LinkedIn, asked me to call him. I called him, we spoke for about ten minutes. Nothing about his project, just wanted to kind of get to know who I was and learn a little bit about me. So that was about the matter.
Mr. Mayor, I also had an ex parte communication with Mr. Hillisheim. He spoke to me about his project and what he plans to develop. I also had some questions about environmental concerns that he was able to answer for me.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Hillisheim and I had that conversation, he being representative of Circle K. Anything further? All right, any questions for Mr. Cooper with regard to his presentation? Saying that, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Do you have anybody wishing to speak to the council regarding this matter?
Yes, we have Mark McClure first. Hi, Mark.
Good evening.
Sorry. Yes, I'd like to cede my time to Mr. Hillisheim, if that's possible.
Yes, and he also has his hand raised, so both of you are allowed three minutes to speak.
Okay, yeah, so I'd like to cede my time to Mr. Hillisheim, so I'll lower my hand, if that's okay?
Okay.
Certainly, yeah. Mr. Hillisheim on board?
Hi, Ross.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening, yes, we can hear you, go ahead, please.
You know what, let me, let me do this, hold on one second. You know, I'm trying to get my camera to work, but for some reason it can't. But can all of you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, thanks so much tonight. I'll be brief with my comments. Thank you all for your time. My name's Ross Hillisheim. You can still hear me, right?
Yes.
Great. I just want to clarify real quick. I do not represent Circle K convenience stores. I represent my own firm, California Capital Investment Group.
Thank you.
I want to talk about three separate issues. First is the history of the site, the second is the planning approval, and the third is where we are today, in my opinion. First, the history. Historically, this has been a vacant commercial property situated between a storage facility, Highway 29, and a city-owned vacant commercial property. We, California Group, purchased the property in December of 2019. We reached out to many different users, including Starbucks, Pete's Coffee, Grocery Outlet, Trader Joe's, and CVS drugstores. All of them did not express interest in this specific location. The previous developer's plan was to build a Wendy's drive-through location and a separate fuel station located at the northern portion of the property, which in my opinion created a very busy and tight site plan. Therefore, for about nine to ten months, I personally and staff here in our firm worked with city planning and public work staff to get our entitlement package ready for planning commission review. We spent considerable time and effort just to get to the planning commission meeting. Number two, the planning approval. The Broadway District's specific plan, zoning code, and the appropriate SEQA documents state that fuel stations are conditionally allowed in the business park zone, which Mr. Cooper explained. Our specific site plan has what's called a reverse fuel station layout. This is to make the building and architecture prominent from the intersection rather than the traditional fuel canopy on the corner. Our property and its use, in my opinion, is a nice buffer between the busy highway and the storage and industrial uses to the west of our property. The design and architecture fits perfectly in the Broadway District's specific plan. Our project will capture the essence of the already-built-out east side of Highway 29. Also, only one service station is on the west side of Highway 29, which is currently the safe way, ours being the number two approved site. Some of the things that we're going to be doing on the property is, it's a 2.3-acre property right now. We are going to be widening Napa Junction Road to align the entire intersection. This creates a safe turning radius for trucks turning onto westbound Napa Junction Road from Highway 29. The widening also creates a safe westbound bike lane for cyclists. Our environmental biologist determined that the property has approximately 4,000 square feet of seasonal wetlands. We'll be tripling that size of wetlands and making approximately 11,400 square feet of new indigenous wetlands. We worked with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the San Francisco Regional Water Board to get the appropriate permits for that. Along the lines of the landscaping, we will be landscaping this property. About one acre of the entire property will be landscaped. We will be replanting three, or we'll be planting 30 new trees and we'll be removing an invasive black walnut tree from the property. A couple weeks ago, I listened to the February 2nd meeting, I thought it was a great dialogue. One of the things that brought up was the elementary school to the west. As I believe all of you know, that elementary school is being relocated and I do not believe any children will be at that elementary school in the future. Also, we're constructing bike lanes on both sides of Lombard Road and on the north side of Napa Junction Road. We'll be installing bike equipment and repair station for cyclists who may need tools while out on a bike ride. Also, we have a local hire initiative. The project plans to add 10 to 15 new jobs. This does not include the back office or vendor positions also being created by our new business. American Canyon has a traffic impact fee that was passed by city council. Our project will be paying that impact fee. As of early 2020, our use was classified by the governor as an essential business. Therefore, in the October 2020 planning commission meeting, me and our project received a five-to-zero unanimous vote for this conditional use permit. This is my last part about where we are today. Today, I see that over the last two to three months, our engineers, architects, stormwater consultants, landscape architects, and myself have been working with the city building and public work staff to attain a ministerial permit, which by the way, I've enjoyed working with all those people. I think all of them would say good things about me and our project. We pride ourselves on doing good work. We are currently in the third round of building department comments and I expect the building permit to be issued within the next 30 to 45 days. I watched the city council meeting on February 2nd twice and I took some notes. I read the staff report and the recommendation for the meeting, and it is my opinion that the construction permits portion of this ordinance was not discussed with the council or contemplated in the staff reports. I was honestly surprised to read the language of the ordinance, which places a moratorium on quote "construction permits for fuel stations." I believe that I'm the only project in American Canyon that is currently under construction permit ministerial review. Therefore, I'm here to be heard, I am here tonight to be heard and state my opinion on the ordinance and the matter. If this ordinance passes tonight, it will create harm for me and my firm and negatively affect our entitled project. I reached out to all the city council members and all of them either called me back or had time to meet with me in person, which I appreciate and thank you for your time. In conclusion, I ask that you tonight take into consideration my entitlement and vested right for the use permit on my property. My ask tonight is that you remove or carve out the quote "construction permit" language in the proposed ordinance. I believe that you have this authority and that you can discuss this tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there another speaker?
Yes. Let me remove. Hi, Nick.
Yes, hello. Hi.
Good evening.
I am the chair of the Napa Sierra Club Executive Committee. On behalf of the hundreds of members of the Napa Sierra Club, I would like to urge the American Canyon City Council to adopt the urgency ordinance for the moratorium on new gas station permits. We are also asking you to amend the Broadway District's specific plan to prohibit additional gas stations. As most of us know by now, the transportation sector provides the greatest amount of carbon emissions in the U.S. Thanks to these carbon emissions, climate change is exacerbating our local weather conditions, bringing a continuous storm of horrendous wildfires to our wonderful county and devastating our homes and forests while creating severe health issues for our citizens. That's why it is imperative that we make a concerted effort to reduce emissions from the transportation sector now. As a start, we must stop adding anything new to the fossil fuel infrastructure that services both gasoline and diesel-powered transportation. Many other cities and counties are setting various ambitious goals in ending this infrastructure. If we look to our Sonoma County neighbors, they have created a very robust organization called the Coalition Opposing New Gas Stations, CONGUS, which is dedicated to opposing every new gas station proposal in their county. Also, many countries and states such as California are implementing bans on the making and selling of new vehicles that utilize the internal combustion engine. In September, Governor Newsom, as you know, issued an executive order decreeing that by 2035, no fossil fuel vehicles will be sold in California. Furthermore, many large automobile corporations such as GM and Toyota have stated they will be increasing their zero emission EVs substantially. Many of the companies are planning to reach electrification targets sooner than expected. Clearly, this means that fossil fuel-powered vehicles in California are going the way of the dinosaurs. Therefore, it makes absolutely no sense to construct new stations anywhere. In order to achieve the ending of the fossil fuel infrastructure, local counties and municipalities must act to end the permitting of new gas stations. Please let American Canyon be the vanguard for all of Napa County transitioning from a fossil fuel infrastructure to an electrified one by adopting the urgency ordinance for the moratorium on gas station permits and to amend the BDSP to prohibit additional gas stations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there another speaker?
Hi, Tom.
Okay, here I am. I'll give you a video too. There you go. Hey, council members, good evening. Sent you an email the other day and that covers a fair amount of background. By the way, my name's Tom Robinson and I'm with Robinson Oil and we're the Rotten Robbie Advocate. I sent you an email the other day, which gives you some background on the company and it provided you a number of my comments and opinions, so I'll be somewhat brief or briefer. I think to start with, it's hard for me to understand why you need the moratorium. To start off with, you don't have very many gas stations, only three, and so you're currently somewhat underserved. Number two is there really won't be that many more because the good locations are pretty much gone. And maybe most importantly, and this might be the most important part of this, is that with your land use power, you can deny an individual project that doesn't meet your expectations. And so if you can deny it and you're not going to get many applications, what do you need a moratorium for? Obviously, to me, it seems totally unnecessary. Now, if you pass a moratorium, the second part is it's unclear to me what your goals Is it in your intention to have a planned community where the city decides which businesses go where? Or maybe just no gas stations? Or are you trying to do this, this moratorium goals for a climate change solution or statement? If so, it's truly not a solution. You could have 20 more gas stations in this city and it would not change the amount of fossil fuel that is burned. The only change to how much fossil fuel is burned is how much you or I drive fossil fueled cars or fly in fossil fuel airplanes or receive products that arrive on fossil fuel ships. Banning gas stations is a statement. It is a statement without a climate change impact. Like, my last comment is more personal about Rotten Robbie. You know, I like to believe that if you got to know us, you would encourage us, you'd welcome us with open arms into your city. As I noted in my email, we want to be a part of American Canyon. We want to provide needed services, like a large convenience store, like a car wash, like fueling, like a fueling facility. Building and the landscaping would be attractive and well-maintained. We'd have outdoor seating, we'd have bike parking, we'd have EV charging. We would also be an important source of revenue to the city. I understand that you are a gateway to the Napa Valley. We hope to help you enhance your gateway. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you. We have another speaker?
Hi, Valerie.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me?
Oh, yes.
Great, hello. I'm Valerie Zizak-Maurice, your president/CEO of the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce. And I believe as this is a topic of business that I should chime in and just let you know that here at the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce, we are pro-business. We are We are definitely for new businesses coming to town, but we also need to keep business diversity in mind. Allowing too many of the same type of business into American Canyon is not how we want to promote our city, and is not what we are looking for. But I also believe that treating our businesses with respect, and giving the opportunities to businesses to come into our city, and allowing them a smooth process that's fair. So on behalf of the Circle K that's coming in, they have done an excellent job at reaching out to our community, not just our council members, but me also at the chamber, getting to know American Canyon, asking what our needs are, asking what some of the services that we would like to see within the gas station, and really doing their part by engaging in our community. With that type of engagement, I can already tell that we're going to have a key player in town. They want to do the right thing by the city of American Canyon, but I also believe, on behalf of our businesses, we need to do the right thing by them. They've been approved by Planning Commission. As you know, this is an approved process. And yes, they're still permitting on the construction side, but they have purchased property in American Canyon, and they have worked diligently to get this process going. So I believe if no other gas stations are allowed to come into American Canyon, that we need to do right by Ross and his crew, and allow them to continue the process they've already started. Thank you very much, and I appreciate everybody stepping up and taking this matter into hands, and making sure that the businesses that are coming into American Canyon is what our residents and our council want to see. So everybody, have a great night.
Thank you. Is there another speaker?
Hi, everyone, good evening. My name is Emily Bit. I'm a current junior at ACHS, as well as the co-president of Schools for Climate Action. I'm here today with Alisa Koresh. So we recently spoke at the last American Canyon City Council meeting in objection to the new gas station proposals and developments within American Canyon. And I first wanted to start off by saying thank you to the city council members, Mr. Brent Cooper, Mr. Jason Holly, and the staff who have taken the concerns of citizens into consideration. At the meeting on February second, there were various points made in regards to gas station development from both sides of the coin. Our main concern being climate change was brought up various times, to which Tom Robinson of Rotten Robbie responded with, and I quote, "Even in 2035, we will still have a whole fleet of internal combustion engines. That's the reality." He went on to say that "only time will tell how things sort out." These are very valid points, ones that we're sure other members of the community agree with. However, we would like to offer a different perspective to these arguments. It is true that 2035 does not seem like a reasonable number, especially when climate change has only gotten worse over time. While seeming impossible, many do not realize that we don't have a choice. Regardless of how we feel, the effects of climate change will be irreversible as near as 2030. Even if it seems impossible to make these deadlines, why should we not do everything in our power to save our planet and future generations? And even if we're a small town in a small county, why should we not strive to be the change? Councilmember Gary Kraus of Calistoga once said at a Climate Action Committee meeting that reliance on the state will not solve our problems in a timely manner. This is absolutely true. We mustn't fall victim to the bystander effect for such an important and life-threatening issue. Addressing Mr. Robinson's last point, global warming is no walk in the park. We cannot simply wait it out, assuming that time will solve our problems. We got ourselves into this predicament, and now we must find solutions and shovel ourselves out before time is no longer on our side. With no action, there will be no progress. The students and members of Schools for Climate Action truly appreciate the time and effort put into this ordinance, and as well as the progressive and thoughtful language included. To further its impact on Section Four of the ordinance, we would like to request the inclusion of climate change to the study conducted by the Community Development Director. Thank you all for your time, and if possible, I'd like to pass this off to Alisa Koresh.
Thank you, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Okay, great. Hello, as Emily mentioned prior, my name is Alisa Koresh, and I'm a junior at Napa High School, and the other co-president of Napa Schools for Climate Action. We're very thrilled to see the progress and the transition away from the gas stations, and such support from the city council. We know our local officials are leading the city on the right path. Besides expressing our gratitude to you, we came here today to address a concern that many people, including you, will have as we see more gas station limitations in the upcoming years. Our group is currently working on a project called Fossil Free Future, which has the main objective of eventually restricting new gas station development in all of Napa County. We presented our project to Mayor Leon Garcia last month, and he expressed his worries in regards to how people will be able to afford switching from gas-powered vehicles to alternative fuel vehicles. A lot of citizens in Napa County use gas-powered cars, but not everyone can afford the switch, and will need some type of aid and other additional resources to change their car type. We understand that this presents itself as an issue, which is why we recommend you consider connecting with the groups that provide such opportunities and incentives. Gopal Shankar from Ricota Energy shared with us a very useful resource that we'd like to share with you, which is Drive Clean Bay Area. They offer programs that provide financial assistance to those income-qualified consumers who would like to have an electric vehicle. We're sure there are more groups you could connect with to solve this issue. Due to the effects of climate change that many people globally are starting to experience, people are beginning to expect and open up to necessary switches we must make as a society for the sake of our future. At the last city council meeting, Mr. Tom Robinson mentioned that he believes the city should not micromanage the development, and instead have high standards. Although this may be true, new gas station development calls for closer inspection as it has the possibility of putting community health at risk. Climate change is a huge danger that we're facing, and any sector of society that contributes to it should be micromanaged. In Section Two of the ordinance, it mentions what must be done in order to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. You understand the severity of the current climate crisis, and are taking the right steps for a bright future. Thank you so much for all the work that you do.
Thank you. Is there another speaker?
Hi, this is Chris James, a resident of American Canyon. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, everyone asks. I did send an email, and I encouraged you to read that, but I wanted to touch on a couple of things today. So the reduction in gas, I agree that, you know, we're not going to reduce gas as a city, right? But what I'm concerned about is what happens in five or ten years' time when gas does drop, and then these gas stations could get abandoned. You know, Councilmember Miriam Amadama's actually pointed out, we already have one abandoned gas station in the city that will take a lot of work to actually redevelop that lot. I don't want to see that happen to other lots in the city, some vital lots that could be used for other business in the Broadway District Plan. The other point that someone else made was about the school. Well, the school is there right now, will be going away, but around the corner, at Calvary Baptist Church, I believe there's another school, I see children there all the time. Looks like a school to me. And that's just, you know, a few hundred, maybe a hundred yards down further from the current school. So they will be impacted by this. And especially when, you know, the houses get built up at the hill and kids go to school, extra traffic on that junction could be a problem. Talking about safe routes to school, the proposed development on Donaldson, and that is on, you know, city-designated safe route to school, right? That would be a very busy intersection if we added an extra gas station there. So that would be some of my concerns. And so I would encourage the city to closely look at the Broadway Plan and try and modify it to restrict these things. You know, I really do seriously think that we will be moving very quickly toward electric cars, more quickly than we think. And, let me see. And I think that's it, and just again, I would encourage you to look at my email that I did send. And I really want the American Canyon to really be the true gateway to the Napa Valley, not the fuel station to the Napa Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, is there another speaker?
Yes. Hi, Jay Mikalogic?
I believe he's muted. Mr. Mikalogic, you're muted, there you go.
Yeah?
I can hear you, yes, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Just a couple things. The gas station there, I'm representing it as the front on Donaldson Way and Highway 29. That's a big enough area there to actually change over to a charging station. If you switch over to gasoline, you have potential to be the largest area to do that. The other thing is, the highway, there's a lot of cars go down this highway. The northern, those that go north, we actually tap the income from those. The ones coming south, you do not have that much, you're not tapping that at all, really. When they get the same place that exits, they can't get in safely, they'll all go right through. So we have a potential here to get more money of the southbound traffic. You have money going on the northbound traffic, but you do not have money coming on the southbound traffic. I understand, I mean, I understand your situation, your feeling. The Robinson Oil Company will make that corner a lot better-looking than what it is now, and actually improve the city. So those are my, that's my feelings on this, I don't know. I appreciate the council, I actually appreciate every one of you there. A lot of you I know. And I thank you very much for your willingness to listen. And actually, enjoy being in American Canyon. American Canyon is a great city. I mean, I really believe it's one of the best cities around. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there another speaker?
There are no more up and coming. Wait, one more, sorry.
Okay.
Well, two just went up. Hi, Nathan, please unmute your microphone.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Hello, City of American Canyon Council and other staff here tonight. I just want to give you some background and let you know that I am representing 7-Eleven and their development. I do not work for 7-Eleven, but I work for the development company who is working to push along their entitlement package, and work with city staff to make the adjustments and improvements that are required to create a desirable development. So I know that at the last council hearing, I sat in and listened to all the community comments that were made, and after listening to several tonight as well, I know there's a lot of concern with the community members and the council about what the future of, you know, transportation is going to be, and really is gas a reasonable option for the city? And I first want to start off and say, I know there's a push, and there's a big push in the future for electric vehicles, and I'm, you know, I support that, I'm interested in that. I think that's the way to move forward. But representing 7-Eleven, there is a very real reason why all these businesses are developing gas stations still. The market is not ready to accept electric charging stations. Fuel is still in demand, gas is still in demand. If you look at energy.ca.gov, there's a report that the state puts out about the number of electric vehicles that are currently registered throughout the state of California. And currently, we're only at about 2% electric vehicles across the state. So there's still a huge gap that needs to be cleared. And even if you look at new zero EV, or zero energy, zero emission vehicles, we're only selling about just shy of 8% new. So I agree, that's the way things are moving. But the reality right now is that these businesses can't be successful if they're going to be catering to the electric vehicle market. It's simply not large enough. So this is the right solution for a fueling station at the moment. But these businesses are going to adapt, just like any other business. So once that ticker changes, once we're at, you know, 20%, 30%, I'm sure you will see applications for electric stations in town, and slowly, your stations will flip. So I think it truly does come back to the matter that, you know, a fueling station will be a fueling station, not necessarily gas. Maybe for a short while in the future, it'll still be gas. But it will begin to make that transition. So don't feel like approving a gas station is locking you into a gasoline fossil future. So those are the comments I had to give tonight. And thank you all in the community for sharing, and thank you all with the city for listening. Appreciate it.
Good, thank you. Is there another speaker?
We may have one more. Mark Salma, are you still interested in speaking? We have Jim Wilson. Hi, Jim.
Good evening. To council and staff for this opportunity to speak. The beauty of American Canyon was on display earlier this month for me at your council's conversation on gas stations. And I commend you for your decision to add to your Broadway District's specific plan aesthetic considerations, and adopt the principles of science, and thereby lead the way for other Napa communities to more fully understand the relationship of fundamental planetary chemistry, like livable concentrations of greenhouse gases to our lives. We have to remember the number 350. That is a livable concentration of CO2. My children were born in the early 1980s, and they were born into a world safely below 350 ppm CO2. When my mom died in 1988, atmospheric CO2 was 350, before we came to appreciate what that means. My first grandchild will come into this world in a few days. Last month, global CO2 reached 415 ppm, two parts per million higher than the previous Januaries, and nearly 50% higher than pre-industrial times, a level unheard of on Earth for over 3 million years. My children were born into a safe climate. My children's children are being born into a deadly climate. Today, we need to take a firm anti-combustion stance. It's not possible, while continuing to expand, to meet the aggressive, super-tight timeline science demands to transition from a dirty energy system to a clean energy system. Addressing this fact, Napa Valley Unified School District adopted its Climate Emergency Resolution in May of 2019, and I quote, "Whereas we believe it is critical to advocate for the decisive near-term action needed to prevent further global warming, especially because this window opportunity is rapidly closing. And whereas today's children represent a particularly vulnerable group because increasing greenhouse gases and trapped heat will almost certainly have a profound negative impact throughout their lives, as well as the lives of future generations," end quote. In answer, in June of 2019, American Canyon and other jurisdictions adopted your county-wide commitment to address climate change. And it addresses the facts we just heard in the school district's resolution. In part, it reads, quote, "Whereas Napa County and its cities recognize that climate change is a global problem, and that decisive near-term action is needed to prevent further global warming, and that we must work together with other jurisdictions because the most practical and cost-effective solutions to climate change, which can directly benefit us, require broad participation and coordination," end quote. Thank you. From today's urgency ordinance, climate change is recognized as a reason for the urgency. And also, you had concluded that the best method for protecting the public safety, health, and welfare is to explore regulations concerning the placement establishment, and even the possibility of operating fuel stations in the city. And I say yes to that. And then you go on to say "The Community Development Director is directed to provide a written report to the city council 10 days prior to the expiration of this ordinance, describing the study conducted on local conditions that led to the adoption of this ordinance." And I'd recommend this report might also consider the importance of putting a cap- And I'd recommend this report might also consider the importance of putting a cap on expanding fossil fuel infrastructure, consistent with American Canyon's commitment to address climate change.
Hi Jim.
Thank you.
Your time is up unless the mayor wishes to allow you to continue to speak.
Thank you, Sheri, that's fine. I really appreciate the time.
Mr. Mayor and Mr. Wilson, could you state your affiliation? Are you a resident here, or are you with another group?
Yes, thanks, David. I'm Jim Wilson. I'm from Napa. I'm a climate responsibility advocate. I teach in the schools. I work with 350 Bay Area and Napa Climate Now, and I'm advisor to the student group, Schools for Climate Action.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson?
Thank you.
And are there any other speakers?
There are, there are no more public comments.
We did have some emails, uh, council. I think we should pause at this moment, and we could read those individually, and indicate when you have completed that task. We'll bring mine up now. We can read those individually. So Mr. Mayor, I'm, um, done reading mine, so when everyone else finishes, I have three questions I'd like to ask.
I'm ready as well.
Yeah, I've finished rereading mine again.
Before we get into questions of staff, there are no other public comments. Staff would suggest that the council close the public hearing and then begin to entertain.
Yes, I was just waiting to hear from Councilman Abudalmas.
I'm done, Mr. Mayor. I'm ready.
Oh, everybody's ready.
Yeah, we're ready.
At this point, I will close public comment. Any other questions for staff? All information upon this evening. And it certainly does, uh, does deserve our time and respect to consider it. I think probably would be helpful that I was to consider, uh, continuing this public hearing tomorrow second.
Well, I think we should have a discussion first and answer those questions. And I think, Mr. Washington, you want to start it off, you said you had three questions.
Yeah, if you don't mind. Um, and actually, my questions are more directed to the city manager, Mr. Holly, and our city attorney, Mr. Ross. Um, and basically, I want to kind of go back to a question that we asked last meeting about the old USA gas station. Um, I'd like to see if you guys can give us a status on its current, uh, condition. And this is a station that if, if a lot of our residents aren't aware, it's just, um, east of Highway 29 and south of Donaldson Road. Um, the second question, the second piece of that question is, uh, has the cleanup of that property been completed, and is that closed out? You know, um, and is there any development activities even allowed there? And I think answering those three questions will kind of set the playing field for us when we start talking about bringing in new gas stations, or, um, the consequences of a gas station closing down. Um, and then, and, and final, just a statement for the School of Climate Action. Emily and Alicia, I just want to say you guys did an excellent job, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Member, Councilmember Washington. I think both Community Development Director Brent Cooper and City Attorney Ross have some updates on the now vacant USA gas station site.
Uh, Mayor, if I could just fill everybody in, um, did some research, and in 2015, um, there was a permit to close the underground storage tank. Um, it's issued by the Napa County Building Environmental Services. Um, and so there was, um, a proper closure of the underground storage tank, um, back in 2015. And then on the heels of that, the city issued a demolition permit for the structure and all the improvements that were on the property. Um, I recall, I haven't gone back and verified, but I recall, a number of years ago, um, the general plumbing folks purchased that lot, um, and they now own it.
Bill, do you have anything to add?
Uh, I would just concur with the remarks, uh, that Mr. Cooper just made. I think the original environmental clearance from County Health after remediation required by the Regional Water Quality Control Board, um, was made specifically applicable to the property, was completed in 2009. And at least, you know, my review would indicate there are no issued permits on the property, and certainly nothing on which there would be a expectation for any entitlement to proceed with gas station development.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with the city attorney on that.
I, I just have a comment that I would like to make. Um, I mentioned in my ex parte communication disclosure that I spoke to Mr. Hillisheim about environmental concerns. He did tell me that regulations have changed tremendously since, um, that gas station was built. And he also mentioned that his contract with Circle K requires them, upon vacating, upon termination of the lease, to return the soil back to the condition that it was in at the time that they took possession of it. Um, if Mr. Hillisheim is still on, I think he could explain better than I just did what we talked about earlier today. But, um, the environmental concerns are real, and I think we should give him an opportunity.
I, in my conversation likewise, uh, let's cut to the, uh, individuals or corporations who were involved with this evening. Now, state requires that all gasoline and ground gasoline tanks are double walled, and there's sensing devices to pick them any leaks. So that's quite an improvement from, USA Gas was built a time ago, I believe, before that regulation was required.
Um, also, one more thing that I wanted to mention before we let Mr. Hillisheim speak. Um, the purpose of the moratorium is not to exclude gas stations from ever coming to American Canyon. I think Mr. Robinson suggested that we're anti-gas station for several different reasons. But the purpose of the moratorium is for us to revisit the Broadway District specific plan and see how we would like to proceed with conditional use permits pertaining to gas stations, right?
Uh, I could comment on that. I, I think the, the purpose of any moratorium, you know, based on case law, is to preserve the status quo. Here, the proposed moratorium would allow a possible revision of the specific plan and related zoning ordinances to address matters of concern that the council has discussed. Whole purpose of the, uh, ordinance is to allow time for staff to address those council concerns so that you can formulate a basis for changes that may be appropriate for land use. So, um, you know, the, not only the established purpose in the statute, but what's stated in the ordinance is meant to put a pause, and you're entitled to do that, so that you can address the concerns that you've articulated.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Hillisheim?
Mr. Mayor, before we get to Mr. Hillisheim, it would be appropriate for the council to reopen the public hearing to have Mr. Hillisheim, uh...
Yes, for that limited, for this limited purpose.
For this limited purpose, correct.
It's open for this limited purpose. It's Hillisheim. Public comment is open for this limited purpose.
Hello again, this is Ross. I will address, um, Councilmember Abu Damas's couple of questions and remarks. The first thing has to do with the, um, our contract with Circle K. Circle K is a publicly traded company out of Canada. They have the financial and human resources capital available to clean up really any potential sites. But within our contract with Circle K, they are required to remove the gas station equipment portion of the improvements, which include the underground storage tanks, related underground piping from those tanks to the fuel dispensers, removing the fuel dispensers, and removing the electronic monitoring system, which is mandated, uh, by the state of California to be installed. I have personal experience with this on a site in San Joaquin County. That property owner did not know how to clean up the property. We got involved in the property and did clean it up. We did not build the gas station, we did not cause the problems, but because I believe we're sophisticated and pretty good property owners, we're bringing that site back to, uh, back to a non-contaminated issue. But to answer your question about Circle K, they're required to remove the fuel equipment and, um, bring the soils back to the, um, the standard or benchmark that we delivered the property to them to. And the way we have, um, created that benchmark is by doing a Phase 2 environmental report, which is a invasive drilling into the site to make sure, uh, we know what level of contamination it currently sits at.
Um, Mr. Hillisheim, just to follow up on that, you do not plan on selling your property to Circle K, right? So there's a lease, and once that's up, you are still the owner, you're staying in American Canyon. Is that my, is my understanding accurate?
Yes, we, uh, we're the third developer to this site, and now we're the property owner. What attracted us to this site is literally American Canyon, the location, and the county that you guys reside in. Um, we, the principals of this firm, plan on owning this property forever. We see this being a legacy property and something that we're very proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hillisheim.
With that, Mayor, would be appropriate to close the...
Closing public comment at this time. Thanks.
And, and at a point of order, uh, I think I would go back to, um, Councilmember Washington. Are your questions responded to as you address them?
They are. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, questions, comment?
Senator Wilson? Probably more in the area of comments. So if other council members have questions that need to be clarified, I'll defer... But if not hearing anything, um, in listening to the testimony of all, all the individuals, not to mention all the written comments, I think we've received a lot of evidence suggesting that climate change is a real concern, and that gas stations or the current configuration really is going to aggravate air pollution. Admittedly, if we abolished all gas stations in American Canyon, even those that exist now, we're not going to alter anything, but it is our responsibility to, to do the right thing and to contribute towards trying to reduce, uh, air pollution through fossil fuels. Uh, we also heard a lot of comments about, uh, traffic safety in the context of pedestrians walking along sidewalk areas. And I do know that at Donaldson in particular, uh, there's going to be a lot of student traffic going. Um, and I do think there are probably as many as four different sites. If you use the argument that a signalized intersection is where everybody wants to put a gas station, what we have left, frankly, would be the two, the two western sides of Donaldson and American Canyon, the, the potential, uh, rotten Robbie site, as well as the site directly south of it, and also at Rio del Mar, if you think about it. If that becomes a signalized intersection or a four-way, uh, those two west corners could also be looked at. So I do think it's important for us to put things on hold so we can reexamine the Broadway District specific plan in the context of, is that really what we want to see on those, on those potential intersections? Beyond that, as I mentioned on February 2nd, the, the Donaldson site, um, is also that Home Improvement District. And I do think we should explore the potential of that as a site. If we were to, you know, if, if it were to become a, a gas station, including all the other, uh, uses, it would effectively eliminate the Home Improvement District concept. And so in my mind, I think we need to spend some time analyzing the, the implications of that particular site vis a vis the Home Improvement District. Um, so the last comment is, I am sympathetic to Circle K, well, to Mr. Hillisheim's, uh, concerns. I recognize that maybe legally, they may not have the same vested right as if they were under construction, but they did go through the planning process, they did operate in good faith. And to some extent, they're, they're kind of on the northern fringe of the, the district plan. So as far as I'm concerned, I would be willing to consider some type of a, of a carve-out, maybe, uh, looking at the, the ordinance and modifying it to reflect, uh, you know, to, to somehow set a standard that says, uh, if you've already been approved, uh, that, that we're not going to be looking at you so much. looking at you so much. And I would defer to our city attorney to make sure the language is better than what I'm saying. So that's kind of where I'm at. I, I do appreciate in the ordinance section four, talking about that written report, and I think we've gotten some suggestions about what should be included in that. I would like to add to that some analysis of electric vehicle, what the, you know, what the market industry or, or the available data tells us about the, the absorption rate or the transition to EV fleets, if we can do some research on that, as well as some examination of the business model itself. In other words, it's easy to say, well, we'll swath out gas pumps and put in EV charging stations. But I don't think that's the way the future is going to play out. I think it makes more sense to install EV charging stations in parking lots and then you pull up, go to Walmart, spend a half hour, an hour, and come back and you've got your shopping and your charging done. So I would really like staff to examine, to the extent they can, what the fueling industry is, you know, that the domestic industry is going to look like in the next five or 10 years. I do believe that once we put our minds to it, there will be a ramping up. We may be at 2% to 3% now, but I suspect if we figure out what the heck is, is blowing up this planet, I've got a feeling we'll be able to ramp up rather quickly to a much higher percentage. And therefore, I do think this may be a business that can't sustain itself like it can or like it thinks it can. So that's my long explanation of my concerns and why I would be supportive of the ordinance, but would like to do something as it relates to the Circle K project, as well as to some of the elements of that written report that's required.
Great.
Councilmember Raro?
Okay, great, thank you. Unless somebody else wanted to go first. Yeah, good discussion and I love everybody's input. I think we had 11 speakers tonight, one seated this time, and that's the most interaction we've had in quite some time on a agenda item. So obviously, there's a lot of opinions and passion around this, and I've considered it all. I even did an online poll myself amongst the citizens of American Canyon of how they felt about gas stations in town and got several reactions to that. Took that into account, I mean, you're normally, post-COVID, you could probably have a meeting with the community and hang out and talk about things, but we're stuck to an online world. Mr. Robinson came out and said, why are you doing this? And I think as a council, we need to understand or revisit why we are doing this. And I think why we are doing this is also, wasn't necessarily, it didn't hit the mark in the staff report either. I think the staff report is going a, a little bit further than our, our, than our intention when we discussed this two weeks ago, in particular around the construction part. And I think we were, we gave guidance, but I think we need to refine and do further of our guidance. But to the question of why are we doing this, specifically to Mr. Robinson, it's not, to me personally, it's not about the environment, although those have aspects to it. It's about the character of the Broadway District and how we shape that. We spent many years working with groups, and I was part of that group before I was on council, of the Broadway District specific plan. And, you know, we also have to understand, and it was in Mr. Cooper's slides at the beginning, the Planning Commission has approved a gas station and would like it to move forward after many variances and requests and input from the community. What they were asking of council and why this is before us is not necessarily, should Circle K go in or the developers of, I'm sorry, Mr. Hillisheim, I'm going to mess up the name, but it's the California Capital Investment Corps, the group that he represents. It's not necessarily about that. That's been approved and we ought to honor the good work that the Planning Commission has done and set forth. And we should also applaud them for bringing this forward to us to talk about further and future uses of Broadway District specific plan. So as with the Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Joseph, you know, I would like to see some sort of carve-out of some sort to let the Circle K process be approved honoring what, I mean, they went through everything except for putting a shovel in the ground, which they're about to do. And I don't think it would send a good message to the business community about how we do business of, if, in American Canyon, if we pull the rug out now. But again, it's, we, the, the Planning Commission was, had requested clarification on fuel station policy going forward. Going forward is the key. And that's why I'm supportive of this moratorium, to help us take a pause and understand what, what is, what the Broadway District specific plan could be and where we could put things. So those are my comments, you know, and just in general, online Facebook polling and in social polling, I didn't find too much support for additional gas stations in town. So that's sort of the feedback I get and as a representative of the community, you, you have to take those things into account.
I'd reflect on any comments, I think, yes, some very good comments this evening. I really appreciate everybody's input on this. I would say, with respect to comments I've had with all the, those who are interested in this type of development, again emphasizing this, what it is. We started this out with, a lot of it was a sense of place. What does American Canyon look like? And I stayed mine, quite frankly, I don't want something that looks like gas station alley. But I think you can, with a sensitivity to the aesthetics, can develop something that's acceptable. Had a conversation with Mr. Hillisheim, pointed out Taco Bell. Taco Bell is like a chain, fast food. They have a very utilitarian look all over the world, but except here in American Canyon, we raised the issue of what the aesthetic would look like. And they thought, they dug a good job with it. That's what I'm looking at. If you drive north of here, Bedlam Road, near the airport, there's a Chevron service station. It says Circle K on the, the amenity attached to it. Frankly, I think it's very, a good style of architecture. If that's something that we can enforce within American Canyon, then that makes that issue of what a gas station looks like, something that more is more sensitive to what American Canyon is. I pointed out to him that, you know, the, the Walmart, the Lodge, all of that was developed by Vince Butler, Buzz Butler. He took the rooftop design from what the hillside looked behind us. The color scheme was from the hillside also. So it has a wheel that reflects surroundings of American Canyon and it doesn't have that hard edge of a, something that's very utilitarian in look. I think it's a sensitivity to aesthetics, which I would appreciate with all development in American Canyon. And we really haven't had a whole lot of conversation on the Broadway specific plan about what that look is. But I think probably the most important thing in all of this, certainly to me, is that sense of place. And we've heard that over and over again from our community. What do we want the Broadway specific plan, the development there to look like? Something that reflects American Canyon. We will become, with the development of the Watson Ranch, Sherrons and Gardens, a destination for visitors, for the hospitality. And we will pick up enormous amount of city revenue on that. We want something that attracts visitors and shows them our sensitivity to having a place that welcomes. And that would be my comment on it. I think it's, I think moving forward with a, what has already been approved by the Planning Commission for Circle K would be appropriate. I think the details of how that rolls out in terms of what the construction is is something our, a discussion we can have down the road. Council is desirous of having a, a moratorium on what remains. You know, we certainly can't continue this to March 2nd, as I said earlier, I kind of had a feeling that we have an awful lot to weigh in our minds with regard to this.
Yeah, Mayor, I might offer a suggestion. You know, if, if the council is generally supportive of the staff recommendation, but would like to, as you mentioned, carve out the Circle K project and kind of bifurcate those two concepts, would you have another matter for council consideration this evening? And not necessarily having to continue to March 2nd, perhaps what staff can suggest is to push, just pause for the moment on, on this item and go to the next item, which is an update on the city's budget forecast. And while staff is presenting that, city attorney and myself can look really quickly at this ordinance with, with Brent Cooper as well, and come up with some composed revised language around that carve-out. And if it's in our mind, a little too complicated or too messy or doesn't get us quite where we go, then, then maybe talk about continuing to March 2nd. But given that we got this other item, we might be able to kind of divide and conquer a little bit and I'll, I'll leave you all in the capable hands of Marianne Lincoln Bogart to go through our major budget update. And we'll see if we can put our heads together on, on that kind of a, kind of a carve-out. But I, I would, I'll be wanting this to be sort of a unanimous direction from, from all the council members, that that seems like something we'd want to be doing.
Okay.
Counsel, that works for me. All right. If you can craft it on the fly, you know, it's better to do it tonight than in two weeks.
So, I have a proposal, and I don't know if council's going to be amenable to this. Last week I was very, or last council meeting, I was very aggressive in, in that I said absolutely no more gas stations on Broadway and I'm disappointed in the Planning Commission's decision to approve Circle K. And if we had the opportunity to revisit, we should revisit that, right? Now we're here and I'm listening to comments and I still believe that we have too many gas stations on, or if all gas stations that are currently in process are approved and built out, we have way too many gas stations on a small stretch of land. We're working on BDSM, which, which is goal is to make American Canyon more pedestrian and bike friendly, and it's to slow down the speed limit on Highway 29 and get traffic off the roads and reroute them through the Newell Extension. We also have a governor who wants to eliminate gas vehicles. We also have several members of the community who are commenting on environmental concerns. So adding more gas stations concerns me. I, I think Chris James mentioned that I brought up the USA gas station, the abandoned gas station on Highway 29. That was actually Councilmember Washington that brought it up and I was excited that he did because I remember when the gas station existed and then I remember it shutting down and it looks very ugly. To be frank, speaking with Mr. Hillisheim today, did put me at ease about the Circle K gas station in terms of, he's not leaving, he's willing to work on creative ways to make sure that that area does not remain abandoned. He's fully aware of our governor's intention to eliminate gas vehicles. Regardless, it's still, I'm still uncomfortable with it, but I do believe that it's unfair once a permit has been approved to make a decision and try to rescind it. So with that in mind, I do agree with the council's direction in terms of creating some sort of exception for pre, for already approved permits. But I'm wondering if council would be amenable to putting a, a deadline on it. For instance, if Mr. Hillisheim doesn't get all of his ministerial permits approved within 90 days, then we need to revisit his permit as well. And I, I know I'm being harsh, but I'm just trying to look out for my community and not have a, or abandoned gas stations at some point, knowing, I feel like it's irresponsible to continue to approve gas stations, knowing that our governor wants to eliminate gas vehicles in our state within the next 15 years. So I'm just trying to find a compromise.
Let me separate that out, if I may, if I'm understanding you correctly. Eliminating gas stations is a whole other issue, but we have Mr. Hillisheim, who is approved by the Planning Commission with this project, and I quite agree with you on that. Let's make sure that we address that need, okay? The, the future projection of gas stations is another matter, what we do with that about in American Canyon, we could press that second. But I think in the interest of the applicant, who has had a 5-0 vote in favor from the Planning Commission, has come to us and say, okay, my project's underway, you know, he's, he's invested quite a bit of money to acquire that property and get it moving and he wants the surety that he can go forward. If we can do that tonight, then we should do that.
Which, which, Mr. Mayor, I'm not suggesting that we cancel his permit or revoke it or anything of that sort. The permit that was approved is discretionary, right? The Planning Commission serves at the, at the pleasure of the council. And they recommended, that was a 5-0 recommendation to approve a conditional use permit for a gas station.
Yes.
And I'm not suggesting that we cancel that or void that. I, I fully respect the Planning Commission, I believe that they're capable in doing their work. What I'm suggesting is that we put a time limit on getting the rest of the permits approved.
Well, I think it would help this conversation if Brent, if you could chime in, what, the, the use permit itself has an expiration date and there's no map involved, if my memory is correct, right? So we're not talking about map extensions or anything else, this is a singular parcel. So the CUP has a shelf life on its own of...
Continue to use permits approved for one year. They can apply for an extension for one additional year.
And that extension will be a staff level approval or that we have a Planning Commission approval?
Yeah. If, if I can offer something...
Wait, I didn't get the answer to that question. Is it a staff level approval for the extension or would it have to come to the council?
It is a staff level approval, although...
The moratorium kind of...
But we always have discretion to elevate it for extenuating circumstances, but that would be very rare.
One of the things we could do, if, if we all agree to a carve-out for this time period, then for the next 45 days, hopefully, staff and the developer will get it all figured out. At the end of the 45-day period, if we need to extend it, we, if I understand things correctly, you know, if we wanted to say time's up and put back the construction permitting, I'm not necessarily in favor of that, but the idea is, if I understand it correctly, we could modify the second ordinance? Or Mr. Ross, you may want to weigh in and say you can't bounce around.
Okay, I, I think what I'd like to do at this time is join in the city manager's suggestion that he and I and Brent talk while you take up the next discretionary item on the council agenda, because I think there is a way to fashion the relief that's requested. I would not be in favor of setting limitations on achieving construction on an issued building permit because there are so many variables.
Yeah.
But I think there is a way to affect the carve-out that can address the, what I'm hearing as the, we haven't heard from Councilmember Washington, but what's been addressed so far. But I, I think, I think that's best done if the city manager and I and Brent can have a moment while you consider this next matter.
Counselmember Washington must weigh in.
Well, I was, I was going to mention that, you know, if that's what we were debating on, whether or not the council will agree to a carve-out, then I would say that I'm not in agreement to a carve-out. And, and I stood to my, my points the last time we had a meeting, that I'm in 100% support of, of the youth that have come to me and can, and share their concerns to me about climate change. So if, if the, if the debate is whether or not I'm going to support a carve-out, I will not.
So, thank you. I'm, I'm fine, I want to get to Councilmembers Abudhammas' point, it's, it's just an interesting request. You know, I'll take what Mr. Ross's hesitation and recommendation to not put a timestamp on that construction process, because it's an interesting request because, you know, you don't want any more gas stations, but the one that you have, you want to hurry up and get it done. And I think there's a natural process to get that done, a year timeframe sounds good to me. And in terms of the recommendation by Mr. Holly and Mr. Ross in terms of, you know, bringing a carve-out to a vote, I'm willing to move that forward and you guys have that discussion and we can move on to the, the next item.
The next item?
Yeah, and this also includes a moratorium, right? There's a moratorium here for any other parts of the gas stations that are, that are going to happen. So it's, it gives us time and it also respects the process that is... So it's, it gives us time and it also respects the process that is well advanced in terms of possible build out and all the things that I mentioned earlier in terms of the, the planning commission and what their original request to us was, you know, like what is, what, what will the, and I wrote it down, requested clarification on fuel station policy going forward. Going forward after the 5-0 vote for the Circle K project. And as a council, I think we should, we, we can do that with a 45 day moratorium and let Circle K move forward.
Well, and, and I would agree, but Mr. Mayor, I'm just wondering in light of council member Washington's comments, should we have a quick vote on whether or not we want to proceed with the carve out?
Yeah, at, at this point, I mean, you guys certainly can. At this point, for, for staff to go and, and behind the scenes and do a carve out on the fly, we really want to be operating from a unanimous direction perspective. And if we're not there and we're just seeing, you know, we're hearing concerns from, from other things, it would be better to, um, the, the better process at the moment would be to continue this hearing to March 2nd. Um, staff will go back um, and talk with all of you individually. And we're going to get to the place, hopefully, that we have um, unanimous support for, for a plan coming forward. And um, if, if y'all were already, already right there, we could probably, you know, dress them real quick. But we're not, it's clear we're not all there and it's not fair to everyone. We want to try and get, we want to try and get there, so.
I will take it. I will take it. Thank you.
So, and, and just, and just to be clear for the public, the, the, for a moratorium to happen, you need a four-fifths vote. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Right, so I'm just replaying that for the, the public. So, um, you know, I think uh, if, if that's said, and, and if everybody's had their piece, I'll make the motion to, to close this, to, for the hearing to be closed and continue this on March 2nd.
Motion is on second.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call please.
Here, you're muted.
Councilmember Abadamos?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes. Thank you, council. The discussion, I look forward to some productive work on this. Those who are tuned in, we will be taking this up on March 2nd. Thank you.
Okay, switching gears.
Me a moment here. Okay, moving on to our agenda. Okay, item uh, in order is item. This is item F1, adopted resolution approving mid-year budget amendments to the fiscal year 2021 budget. Staff report please.
Just go ahead and introduce Finance Director Lincoln Bogart, who will uh, have this item. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Evening.
I uh, want to first start off and make a disclaimer that this is our mid-year budget adjustments for the year that we're in. It's not dealing with next fiscal year. We will be moving into that budget process in the next month or so. Um, and then I also wanted to take a moment. Uh, there were several versions that were sent out throughout the process of this, and I apologize for that. Um, we noted uh, the, the most recent change that came right before the meeting was for Fund 540 and on the screen that I'm sharing right now, it's the expenditure estimated and adjustment that changed, which uh, changed the net total as well. Other than that, that's the only thing that changed on the first two schedules. The third schedule, uh, upon review, Vice Mayor Joseph noticed that our mid-year actuals for each of the categories and the estimated Q3, Q4 didn't approximate the estimated actuals at year end. And um, that was due to the fact that the estimated Q3 and Q4 totals did not include encumbrances. So I added the encumbrances into those totals. They still don't match exactly, but that's because we rounded up at each line item. Um, in the line item budget for the estimated actuals to give us uh, a rounded budget number that we're estimating for actuals. And these uh, exhibits or appendixes are in uh, the council package now uh, that is online as well as were emailed out to you earlier uh, before this meeting. So with that, I'll move over to to the PowerPoint presentation. Did that show up for everyone?
Yes.
Thank you.
So for the mid-year budget adjustment process, we're handling it slightly differently than last year. Um, we have noted that in the budget document, there is authority for um, city manager Jason Holly to make adjustments within a fund. So we presented the appendixes to show the effect of each fund, that the revenue and um, expenditure level as a whole, so that adjustments can be made from, from that authority to be broken out into individual line items. Um, so that we can have the budget closer reflect the actuals that we expect to have occur between now and the end of the year at each individual line item level. But as an overview, um, first I'd like to discuss the general fund. So uh, you know, this year is actually, we've received property tax and sales tax estimates that are coming in well above what we thought they were going to be when we adopted the budget earlier uh, in the fiscal year and, or for this fiscal. Uh, our property tax revenues, uh, we're looking at coming in about 335,000 over what we budgeted. So that's, that's a very good thing. Sales tax, um, also, we thought we were going to come in around 2.2 million and now it's looking more like 2.6 million. So another 380,000 there. Uh, transient occupancy taxes coming in lower than expected, which is understandable. And then all other taxes are also coming in lower um, by about 167,000. That is largely attributable to uh, the card rooms being closed for a good portion of the year. Um, and the expectations uh, being reduced because of that. Um, in all other categories, uh, we actually um, saw an increase also of $170,000. Um, and that's all other revenue sources. The expenditures, we, we do, do have a salaries and benefits and retirement, no PEP savings in the general fund. However, that is almost completely offset by all other expenditures. Um, and it's near break even to the original budget after those are accounted for. I would want to also note that in the all other general fund revenues, um, that includes our COVID relief payment, um, which was like a miscellaneous revenue of 257,000, I think. Um, so uh, when considering those things, we came out uh, 643,000 approximately ahead for where we expect any year compared to where we were, but where our current budget is right now. So, um, that is good news. And then uh, as I stated, the property tax revenues, 355, sales tax, 382. Um, so the, the um, I guess I covered all this in the previous slide. I'll just move on. The expenditure analysis, um, the expenditure projections are within 20,000 of the current budget projection um, and exceed the adopted budget by about 450,000. The, the savings in salaries and benefits, uh, as I said, is offset by increases in other expenditures. And those are primarily from the retention of special legal counsel assigned to administration that was recently um, requested by council in the last meeting. Uh, utilities and maintenance costs from unexpectedly high water charges for medians and parks. Uh, as a, aside on that, I would like to mention that we did some further analysis today on where those are coming in now. And the water charges seem to be going down uh, since we've entered rainy season. So that may not actually be over uh, expectations quite as much as we had uh, projected at the, during this uh, analysis. Also, there's a community development contract with Interwest that is uh, in process. And also the pandemic impact on parts and rec. Um, they had excess overtime and unemployment costs that were really unforeseen. Um, but have had an impact on, on the general fund expenditures. The general fund, uh, projected fund balance, um, the city's projecting a new budgeted general fund net income of 109,030 dollars for 2021 after proposed amendments. Uh, just to show, for example, the one-time nature of the coronavirus relief fund payment, uh, one-time payment cover uh, cost of the pandemic, so 257,000 on that. Napa, the city of Napa also receives some additional C, uh, CDBG, which is Community Development Block Grant Funding. Um, and it was recently reported in the, the news. However, we do not qualify for CDBG funding, uh, because we do not have a population large enough to qualify to uh, request those funds. Uh, we also had the one-time furlough expenditure savings, uh, which totaled about 360,000. And without the one-time revenue and cost savings, results would closer align with what the originally adopted budget was. For debt service funds, um, our debt service payments, uh, expenditures are, we're adjusting them down by 518,800. And our expected revenues are down 423. And as the next slide shows, the expenditure decrease is primarily due to the refinanced city hall. Uh, the debt service reduction for this fiscal year was 422,000. Also, the NG project had been budgeted for this fiscal year. And that is a 96,500 that is not going, the, the NG project won't go into repayment until next fiscal year. So that also is uh, part of the reduction. Uh, and the reductions, the, the reduction in revenue is kind of offset by the fact that we don't have the debt service payments. We're not going to collect from people to pay those debt service payments. And the reductions uh, result in an overall debt service fund surplus amendment of about 96,000. For internal service funds, um, there's uh, actual um, savings on expenditures of about 68,000. Um, most of it is from other expenditures and I'll go into that on the next slide. And also on revenues, there, there's no uh, tax payment, so it's all on other revenues. The reduction in revenue uh, is from a reduction of charges for services and miscellaneous revenues for information technology internal service fund. And the reduction in expenditures uh, stems primarily from a decrease in contractual services and general repairs and maintenance in building maintenance. So two separate uh, uh, funds in the internal service fund category. Combine the reductions result in an overall ISF amendment of about 43,000 to deposit. Uh, we broke out water enterprise and then we separated wastewater enterprise. There were only one revenue and one expenditure line item in recycled water. So I left that with wastewater, although during this fiscal year, we will be cleaning that up to separate them fully for accounting. So hopefully going into next year, we'll have a better picture to break that into a third enterprise fund for analysis. On the water enterprise fund, there were savings in salaries and benefits um, as well as uh, all other expenditures. I'll go into more on that on the next uh, slide. And again, no tax revenues here. Um, and the revenues for water are expected to come in um, over budget. Uh, just as a side note, per the Budget Act, um, in California, enterprise funds are not required to spend on a budget for council approval. However, they do maintain operating budgets for performance purposes. And it has been the practice in the past to bring these before council during the budget process. Revenues in the water enterprise fund are currently on pace to exceed budget by about 430,000 due to increased expectation for sales of water. Um, expenses are projected about 340 below the budget due to primarily reductions in salaries as well as a reduction in capital out. So that's where the, the other expenditures came in was the capital out. So combine those results and an adjustment to the positive for about 766,000 for water enterprise. So for wastewater and recycled water, um, the expenditures are coming in below expectations due to salaries and benefits and all others again. Uh, the revenues are coming in also below uh, estimates, uh, which I'll show you here. The revenues uh, are lower due to lower than anticipated industrial sewer utility service charges uh, as well as reductions in investment earnings and interest income. And also the fact that we're not charging penalties assessments uh, during the COVID pandemic. So those combined uh, explain why the revenues are, are currently falling short of budget expectations. Expenditures uh, are looking about 286 under budget. And that's due about half to salary savings from a vacant plant operator position as well as a reduction of interest due and various supplies and services savings. Those were several, many line items in the budget that were 5 and 10,000 dollars that added up to make up the other half of the uh, the, the reduction in expenditures. The net result is a budget adjustment for a shortfall of about 157,000. So um, in the council packet, Appendix A of the council item shows the overall proposed adjustments to revenues, expenditures, and then the resulting fund balance effect, impact of those adjustments uh, by fund. So by approving that at the fund level, then uh, Jason has the authority within the budget um, through, to make the adjustments within the funds other than the total change in estimated uh, revenues at the fund level or uh, expenditures at the fund level. Uh, which is why we present it the way we did. Appendix B shows the overall proposed adjustments to the general fund. And it's broken down by department. So it's the same as uh, Appendix A, but it's just the general fund departments. So you have an idea of what departments are performing. you have an idea of what departments are performing and where the budget impacts are on the general fund. And then Appendix C, which is the summary by fund types, it has general funds, special revenue, capital project, debt service, internal service, and enterprise. It's a high-level overview by fund type and for the city as a whole. So that concludes what I have put together. Are there any questions?
What action now needs to be taken to make up the shortfall in the wastewater? I mean, what's the plan on that?
The, I'm sorry, let me turn this off.
Yep.
I have.
We got it.
My heater was on.
Oh, sorry. Got chili out there. The report showed a shortfall, if I got it right, get to that page, $157,000, what's the plan to make that up? What do we do?
So for the wastewater, I have here, Fund 540 has $25 million in estimated fund balance after that shortfall. So it could be made up using fund balance.
All right.
Yeah, and another thing to keep in mind, you know, overall, the budget of this fund, we're talking about roughly 1% or so of the fund, so not, we're projecting about $150,000 of shortfall, but in a, you know, a $6 million fund. We're projecting it to be slightly less, I'm not sure that we have the accuracy exactly to that fine tune, it could certainly be less than that, it could be a little more, but it's not, like I said, it's a fairly small percentage of that.
We're not going, bro. Yep.
Correct. And as Lincoln points out, also adequate fund balance to absorb any potential shortfall.
Mayor, if I can ask a few questions, starting with the enterprise funds, on the all other expenditures, I'm assuming that includes a budgeted depreciation?
Yes, anything that is budgeted within those funds is included in.
Right, so arguably, that's a paper transaction, it's not an actual, somebody writing a check.
That's true, that would be a non-cash expenditure.
So it isn't a long-term good thing to be operating a deficit like that, but given the fact that that is more of an accounting transaction than a cash flow, it's not as The other, the more good news is the water fund, it does look as if water sales are exceeding expectation. Some of that, I think, is, you know, well, we've been raising our rates, and so obviously we're going to generate more revenue even if we use the same amount. I do think there's been a, you know, the dire droughts have kind of reside or have settled down, I guess, even though I think we may be getting closer to having to talk about another drought. I mean, right now, it's not so bad, but I think that may be an issue, but it's just something to keep an eye on, that the water fund and the wastewater funds, to see how the rate adjustments that we adopted sometime back for water, how's that playing out over time? And wastewater, on the other hand, has been kind of on a 3% adjustment for 10 or 15 years and still seems to be doing well. The last question I had is on the salary savings. It seems like everybody's got salary savings, is that because of vacant positions, or is that because we adopted a furlough but didn't make adjustments to the budget appropriation?
No, the budget was adjusted for furloughs, it was adjusted downward, and then adjusted backup for COLAs as well as step increases projected throughout the year. The main salary savings at this point is through vacancies that have been experienced here and there throughout the organization. For example, where we said in the water enterprise was a.
A plant operator.
Yeah, which one was that? It was one, one person, and it was.
There he is.
Like half of it, so $145,000, almost all of that amount was from the one position. So those add up quickly if you have a vacancy for an extended period.
Yeah, and I know that we'll be talking about, you know, what we want to see in next year's budget, but one of the concerns I have ongoing is, is what at least I used to call a structural balance or imbalance, as the case may be, so that we begin analyzing our revenues and expenditures in the context of one-time revenues matching one-time expenses, ongoing revenues matching ongoing expenses, including the kind of ongoing expenses that maybe don't happen every year, but you know they're going to, kind of like depreciation for the general fund, if you will. And I know the internal service funds do some of that, but if, as we go through the budget analysis, it's good to see these line item numbers, but eventually to analyze it in the context of how are we matching ongoing and one-time revenues and expenditures?
Right, I would caution, you know, the enterprise funds are going to show depreciation expense because they are full accrual. However, the governmental funds are not going to show depreciation expense until you get to a government-wide conversion, so I wouldn't expect those numbers to be reflected in our general fund analysis.
Right, the internal service funds kind of do that in a way because they are kind of charging you.
Yes.
For your amortized share of IT and COPs and vehicles and so on. Again, in general, if there can be an analysis of how our, you know, what are the one-time revenues and expenditures versus the ongoing revenues and expenditures, to see how those two types are working out, because that's a clue as to whether or not we're doing okay or if we're heading for problems that we make, you know, that we aren't anticipating.
Sure, and that was one of the reasons why for the general fund fund balance, I was talking about the one-time revenues and one-time expenditure cost savings that, you know, helped us this year, but that without which we would have been about where we thought we would be.
Okay, and I appreciate that, because it sounds like you are beginning to look at that, and that is, from my perspective, that is a good way of looking at it, because you can always cobble together enough monies to cover your costs, but to anticipate going forward, you want to look at that structural relationship. So I appreciate where you're heading.
Thank you.
If there aren't any other questions, Mayor and Council, I think that's all we had.
Hey, was there any public comment on this matter? You're muted, sorry.
Sorry, there were no public comments.
Okay. Do we have a resolution to adopt? Should we choose to take that action?
I'll make that motion, I don't have the actual language in front of me, but I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the mid-year budget amendments to the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget.
That's pretty good from memory.
Well, I was just reading the business title on the agenda.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I'm confident in Mark, so I'll second it.
Close to second, real call. Thank you.
Councilmember Abadamos?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you, Council.
Good to see we're in good standing here. Okay, moving on to management staff oral reports, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor, we actually don't have any management comments tonight. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Moving on to Mayor-Council Committee reports and future agenda items.
I'm, I'm, I actually, I think.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
I was just going to suggest, I think the chief wanted to talk to us about some pending legislation.
Oh, sorry, Mike.
Well, different entity.
Okay, we'll go with the fire district. Chief Cahill.
You're muted.
Yeah, here is you.
He's not muted, actually.
Yeah, the microphone isn't working. He may have turned off the volume on his computer.
I'm sure he's going to have something funny to say.
Or when we say we have no management reports, we have no reports, whether you had something to say or not.
Don't mind know the legislation that Mike was interested in, I'm just going to go out on a limb and say don't mind know about this.
Yes, I do. It was introduced on February 10th, it's Assembly Bill 529, it's by Senator Glazer and the Assembly Member from Miranda, forgive me, I can't remember her name, but the idea is that it would require PG&E to give 48 hours' notice of any time they're trying to affect mitigation on any of their lines that are in a high-fire severity zone, and chiefs looked at it, and it would involve basically the area on the eastern boundary of the city limit, you know, basically to the county line in I-80. So he wanted to get direction to write a letter in support of that legislation. It was introduced pretty quickly, but I think the one thing that would, might be appropriate is to recommend that it be urgency, because if it waits for the normal cycle, it wouldn't be effective till January 1, 2022, and that leaves out the whole, whatever mitigation plans that corporation might have for this next fire season. So that's.
Just to put a visual on it, isn't that the big high tension lines to go across up into middle open space?
Yes.
So if there's a spark there during the dry season, if they're working on it, then we have an issue with the fire. I think this is good legislation.
I would make a motion to have our chief prepare something and for the board chair's signature, for his signature, whomever supporting it.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion second. Just see, this would be a fire district board discussion, so real call on board members.
Board Member Abadamos?
Yes.
Board Member Oro?
Yes.
Board Member Washington?
Yes.
Vice Chair Joseph?
Yes.
Eric Garcia?
Yes, thank you.
We ready for council member reports?
I am proud to announce that I finally got my report in today, but at least I've got something in writing that highlights my committee involvements, in particular, talking about economic and business development and the Government Affairs Committee at the Chamber, as well as the Napa Working Families Coalition about a community benefits agreement, and some other things that are in there. So I will try to get them sooner, but I've said that before.
Hold yourself to that problem.
Exactly.
Councilmember Abadamos?
I don't have anything to report this week.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Washington?
Just want to report real quick that I got a lot of kudos for you there, Chief Oscar Ortiz, for your quick response on that homeless encampment that you jumped on really quick. I've had at least 25 people call me and tell me that they really appreciate your team and how they responded to that. And then secondly, Karina with the American Canyon Middle School African-American Coalition, I just want to give a shout out to them for all they did for Black History Month. I really appreciate all the hard work you guys did over there, so thank you. That's it.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Oro?
I have nothing to report, sir.
Well, I think I had a number of other areas, I think the thing that I really want to impress on all of us, had a meeting with the community leadership coalition, the presentation today was on redistricting, you know, after the census. Now, if we reflect back to 2010, what the Citizens Committee did on that was put us with Sonoma County, they carved us out of Napa County. And we had a great little effort in town, I think we had over 1,000 signatures on petition to the committee and tell our story and say, look, we need to remain in Napa County. To get out in front of that, I think we need to collectively, as a council, have a letter with all our signatures, say this is the importance of American Canyon, but your redistricting considerations to stay part of Napa County. We are part of the economy, we are part of Napa Valley, we are part of the economy of Napa Valley, we're the logistics center for the wine industry. Likewise, the relationship with Vallejo needs to remain in terms of the redistricting as well, because we have, well, not only an economic relationship there, but I think probably important to a lot of us on a very personal basis, is the family relationships we have. We have many ethnic communities in American Canyon who are put together with their families or of their same communities in Vallejo, and we need to recognize that as, versus, oh, I had a situation some time ago, staff employee I had was sadly, father was murdered at the store he worked at in Vallejo, but that's in a different district. Brother has to come to do the funeral rites from India. He can't get a, didn't know how to connect to get a visa, an emergency visa for it. Well, that was George Miller's district, so I contacted our representative, Mike Thompson, who contacts George Miller to make sure that they get a visa so the family can be together. We have those types of very close connections between American Canyon families and Vallejo families. So I think we need to take very concerted effort to get in front of this and say to the, because the committee has been identified, there's 14 members, and we need to get the information of that for their deliberations, that the interest of American Canyon is to remain part of the district with them.
I would agree, do we know how far along they are, or they've just established?
They're just established, right, so it's early in the process, and I think we should follow it closely in terms of how their deliberations affect us.
Because I, 10 years ago, we, it was an amazing event in which.
Yes, it was.
There were so many people from American Canyon talking about the need to be part of Napa that the commission ultimately said, okay, we get it, we get it.
Yeah, we get it, yeah, okay.
It struck me as sometimes if you get enough people, you can change policy from no to yes and vice versa.
Well, it's depressing to see a stack of paper that's probably almost a foot thick, you know, hey, look, these are the folks we have who see anything we want.
So hopefully, that has some staying power from one decade to the next, but I would agree that we do need to monitor it and make sure, if there's any kind of initial public comment, that we can get our foot in the door to make sure we stay part of Napa.
Yeah, I'll stay tuned to that, okay.
Okay.
That would be my report. Any future agenda items, wish you'd have taken that.
I do have one, I talked to the city manager about the idea of joint, scheduling a joint session between the council and the two planning, or the Planning Commission, Parks and Community Services, even the Open Space Committee. So I would make a motion that we direct staff to plug in over the course of this year, at least one annual joint session with each of those committees.
I think we need to have some, also some framework around in terms of what's the meeting about, what are we discussing?
Right, maybe to come back with kind of a general outline, because.
because in my vision, it would just be interacting with the commissioners so that we know where they're coming from and where we're coming from so that we're better synchronized than some of the miscommunicate, not so much that, but, you know, so that maybe there would have been a discussion about fueling stations before we had this. Or community gardens might have been worked out differently. So if we can bring something back on that front, you know, so that we do have an intelligent, thoughtful agenda when we do meet.
So is your goal on that to actually vote on something in policy? Or is it more to be, you know, sort of brainstorming, getting together to understand direction?
More the latter. I think it's important for us to have a good working relationship to be able to let, like I said, let the commissioners know where we're coming from. So it isn't so much a specific action as it is making sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, I can be on board in that, but I do recall that we did have one big meeting where we were all trying to vote on something, and it was, it was, you know, there's five of us and seven of them and five more of them, and next thing you know, it's forty comments later.
It's a bit chaotic.
Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to go there. I think it's more of an informal discussion. What are the priorities that the commission's working on? What are our priorities? How do they fit in? More of a general discussion, not a, not trying to get business done.
More informational, no.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that direction.
Okay. Same here.
Same here.
The other one is we have received as a follow-up to our work plan, we did get a draft of the work plan, which is great. I would also like to see the next step, which is plugging in some dates and times or quarters and so on. So that's more of a good job, staff. Let's go to the next step, though.
Yeah, we sent that over just for any sort of final feedback to the council. Number of items, working through milestones and things like that. It's going to take a little bit of work just because there's a number of items on there. So it's definitely going to be the next step, as will conversations around performance indicators. So we're looking at, as we bring a budget workshop forward in the next month or so, starting to identify how we might start to measure some of those performance indicators, what they would be and, you know, how we might provide some of this. So that's also on the docket.
Great, thank you.
Very good. Any statement further from other council members?
We do actually need a vote on the one motion on the joint meeting. So if there's a second to Councilmember Joseph's, Vice Mayor Joseph's motion, we could do that roll call vote, and then we have that for our meeting minutes for record.
Very good. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abadamos?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that being said, we have concluded our business for the evening. Thank you all. Very good discussion tonight, and I look forward to us working on it. So with that adjourned.
Thank you.
You.
Bye.
Good night.